Hi, everyone. Sorry about that. I have my own tech snafu to start off by not being able unmute myself. But anyways, just a quick zoom rundown. For those of you who are unfamiliar in the bottom left corner of your zoom screen, you'll see your unmute and start video button. If you just click those, you'll be able to speak and share your video. Enter the reactions tab. If you click on that and then click the raise hand function, that'll be helpful for when you want to raise public comment, just click on raise hand, you'll be put in the queue. And we would appreciate that if you could change your screen into first and last name. So we have that right when we call on you. And if you have any issue, issues, feel free to chat myself in the chat box, which you'll see at the bottom right of the screen over there, and I'll put myself in chat so you can easily find me. And feel free to email me if you have any technical problems. All right, back to you, Pat.
Okay, great. Let me just, let me introduce the agenda and then I'm going to really hand it over to New Jersey to kind of do a welcome and describe what we're doing here. So if you go see Cam to the next slide, please, thank you. So again, we're just kind of setting the stage this afternoon or early evening for the the piece here. We'll have some opening remarks from Jennifer Moriarty from New Jersey D P in just one second. I'll just kind of go through the process for this hearing tonight in terms of the the online approach. We'll keep that brief. And then really, almost all the time is dedicated to you all to make public comment on this particular filing. And so we'll go through the ground rules there in a little bit, but really, most of the time we're really dedicated to you all and your comments on this. And then we'll turn back to New Jersey D P for a few closing remarks as we as we end. So I'm going to turn it back over to Jennifer to to welcome us and and get things moving.
Okay, thanks, Pat. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Moriarty. I'm the Director of the Division of Land Resource Protection at the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. Today, we're providing an opportunity for a public comment on the Coastal Area Facility Review Act or CAFRA individual permit, waterfront development, individual in water permit, coastal wetlands permit, freshwater wetlands individual permit and flood hazard area verification applications for Orsted's Ocean Wind One project, which proposes the construction of nearshore and onshore components associated with the development of a commercial scale offshore wind energy facility within lease area OCS dash zero four nine eight off the coast of New Jersey. The project proposal includes up to ninety eight wind turbine generators, interarray cables, up to three offshore substations, two onshore substations, and two transmission cables, making landfall in Ocean County, New Jersey, and Cape May County, New Jersey. The project will be located in Berkeley, Ocean and Lacey Townships within Ocean County and in Ocean City and Upper Township within Cape May County. The project will contribute to New Jersey's goal of eleven gigawatts of offshore wind energy generation by twenty forty as outlined in New Jersey's Governor's Executive Order number three oh seven, which was issued on September twenty first, twenty twenty two. Further, the project is intended to fulfill the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities September twentieth, twenty eighteen solicitation for one thousand one hundred megawatts of offshore wind that was awarded to Ocean Wind via the New Jersey BPU on June twenty first, twenty nineteen. You can switch it to the slide cam that has the the site on it. Yeah, so this slide depicts the locations of the various components of the project that I just described. And there's a legend at the top identifying each component for your reference. The permit application is currently under review by the department to determine the compliance with the applicable state land use regulations, including the coastal zone management rules, the Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act rules, the Flood Hazard Area Control Act rules, and the Stormwater Management Rules. While other state approvals may be required for this project, the focus of the hearing today is limited to the CAFRA waterfront development, freshwater wetlands, and flood hazard area applications that were previously described. This hearing is an opportunity for the department to obtain supplemental information from the public on this permit application as it relates to the above referenced regulations. And as such, no decision has yet been made regarding this permit. The department will not be responding to comments or questions today. The legal and technical complexity of the issues raised and our need to allow time to all who wish to comment make it impractical to answer questions or respond to comments in this forum. However, the department will be listening closely to your comments and will consider all comments and questions in its review of the permit application. Where your concerns or comments are not clear to us, we may ask for clarification so we can best consider your comments as we review the application. We appreciate you taking the time to attend this hearing. Please focus your comments on this project as only relevant comments will be considered in our review. And with that, Patrick Field from the Consensus Building Institute, who's assisting the department facilitating this hearing, will go over some of the procedural aspects and ground rules for the hearing.
Great, thank you, Jennifer. Okay, so here we'll we'll go through kind of the the rules of the road for the hearing tonight. So anyone who wishes to speak tonight, we want to make sure we provide an opportunity for them to speak. And that will be via verbal comment. So what you want to do is one of two ways to kind of make note of that is preferably use the raised hand function in Zoom. It the raised hand function is under reactions. And if you go to reactions, click on a little arrow, pops a number of things. There's a hand raised there. You can use that. If sometimes people mistakenly hit the party hat or whatever, that's fine. I'll know you want to be called on. No worries. Or you can actually just say in chat to us, hey, I want to comment and I'll try to get you in the queue as well. So the speakers order will really be in the word of the hands raised. And if something comes in chat, I'll insert it somewhere in there. What we do want to do as we start, we'll do in just a minute, is if there's any public officials online, essentially, anyone who's elected from the state or local level, we want to give them an opportunity to speak first, and I'll provide that time in just a minute. We ask so that everyone has a chance to comment, that people limit their comments to three minutes per speaker. And we'll go through a full round for everybody who wants to speak. As you can just see, Cam in his in his window, just put a timer in that we'll use and we'll explain that in just a second. And if we get through everybody and there's time and people want another round, and there's a few more folks who want to didn't feel like they got their all their words in in the three minutes, we can we can do another round as needed. When we call, when I call on you and I'll try to keep people in queue, if you just state your name and any affiliation as you start, that's actually helpful for the record. The chat function is strictly for technical assistance. So in this particular meeting where it's a hearing, the chat's not for back and forth or comments in writing. The chat is simply to let us know, hey, I can't run this or I can't do that. So you do need to make your comment verbally tonight if you actually want your comment entered into the record and or to put it in writing by the end of the month, which we'll explain in just a little bit as well. Next slide. So as Cam put in his box, there's a little timer there. So we ask speakers to kind of make sure you can see that. And it just gives you a sense of the time as you're speaking. When you are the speaker, we try to have the the speaker view on so that we can see you. Love to have your video on when you are speaking. And and really, you're you kind of get the screen for that three minutes, but just do watch the timer. If you happen to miss that or get passionate about your comments and can run over, I will verbally remind you and eventually kind of make sure that you're done so others can go within the allotted three minutes and want to try to be as fair to everybody as we can be. Again, I think as Jennifer noted, the department is really in listening mode tonight. So they're not going to respond. They're not going to answer questions, but they are taking this all down. And later in writing, when they have a chance to prepare thoughtful response, they will do so. The product proponent, which I don't know if they're on or not tonight, but if in so much as Orsted or staff are on tonight, they are strictly in the listening mode as well. And this is really the state's hearing regarding the permits, as Jennifer mentioned. Next slide. A few rules of the road. These are just, you know, good, good, good rules of the road for kind of, you know, discourse. That we asked that when the person is speaking for the three minutes, it's really the floor is theirs. And they have that opportunity to speak. We would ask that people exercise a modicum of civility. So, you know, generally, this is probably more applicable in person hearings, but like let people do their piece. Please try to avoid too colorful of language. We are in a public setting. And if anything were to go particularly awry, you know, the department would certainly intervene to make sure this was constructive and respectful. People can have a range of views and strongly felt no problem. Just ask people to to display a modicum of civility. Again, if people could just kind of follow my guidance on speaking time and order and and sort of sequence of people, that's helpful just to keep things moving. And then I think just an important note kind of procedurally here, this hearing is not an adversarial proceeding nor a contested case hearing. It's a public hearing on a set of permits. So persons who speak, you're not sworn in as a witness, there's no cross examine. Those three minutes are yours to express your viewpoints, opinions, concerns, issues as you see fit. Obviously, much prefer you focus on the topic at hand, of course. But but unless, you know, unless there's something dramatic, I'm not going to intervene in terms of as you as you cover your comments for those three minutes. Two things, we do have a court reporter who's doing a written transcript of this hearing. We also have the zoom recording online, you know, which will be made available at a later point point online. So we've got two ways to record the verbal comments being made and in writing to make sure that the department then can respond, respond to them in the specific way that you all expressed those comments or issues. All right, next slide. Okay, so written comments again are really due typically within fifteen days of the last scheduled hearing, which is coming up on the fifteenth in person. So comments can be submitted electronically through the department's offshore wind webpage. Cam will put this in chat too, so it's available to you right there on in your chat function. There's also a mail mailing code as well. And I believe that people should really submit those by, I believe it is, but Jennifer, my right is that December thirty first, is that correct?
December thirtieth.
Yep, December thirtieth. Thanks, Lindsay.
Right, thank you very much. Thank you. So December thirtieth would be any written comments you want to submit. Oftentimes, people feel like three minutes isn't enough, so they want to put something longer and more detailed writing, and the the department absolutely welcomes that. Okay, so again, raise your hand if you want to speak. You know, what I want to do is right now, if you do want to speak, I want to first turn to elected officials. So if there's any state or local elected official present who does want to make a three minute comment, I want to provide that opportunity first. So anybody who's an elected official, if you want to raise your hand, I would call on you first. We'll go through that round first. Let me just give that a minute.
I'm having, can you hear me? I am an elected official, but
Yes, John, I can hear you. And if you'd like to make a comment, just introduce yourself title and we'll let you go.
Thank you, sir. My name is John A Peterson, Jr. I'm the mayor in the borough of Seaside Park in Ocean County, New Jersey, and the among the other issues factually and legally, the proposed transmission cables are located immediately adjacent to our municipality and what is currently known as the South Seaside Park section of Berkeley Township. I thank the D P for allowing this forum hosting this. Nonetheless, as as implied in the opening comments by Mr. Field, I find the time period woefully insufficient. I do intend to submit written comments. I've jotted down just a few areas to cover. One of my main concerns about this process concerns the reflection of artificial historical demarcations which are unrealistic in terms of geography. And I say that because this is focusing on just one of the many applications pending and only one segment of the pristine offshore coast of New Jersey. I would suggest most respectfully that from the D P standpoint, all of the pending applications for wind farms off our coast should be looked at in certain respects from a cumulative perspective. They are all one in the same. And I say that from the perspective of endangered species from migratory birds, from the whales, for example. Our particular municipality, for example, has been blessed the last few falls and an ever increasing increasing number of humpback whales, which are right off the beach as recently as this last week. And the proposed construction of what can only be labeled to be a massive construction project is right in the migratory zones of not just the humpback whales, but of course, the totally threatened, nearly extinct right whales. I say my comments from a number of perspectives and respectfully, I would suggest that this, for want of a better term, in terms of this proposal and the other similar concurrent fast track proposals for wind farms off our coast are simply far too much too fast. And those comments naturally can be expanded upon. And I am the arrogance of man in general can't be overstated. We've already virtually lost our temperate rainforests. Little of the Arctic remains unspoiled and perhaps the only ecosystem left is that of the ocean, and even that is threatened. And for us to allow this process to continue and what is left of the right whale could be the equivalent of condemning them to extinction. That's only one of the areas of many I have of concerns as to this proposal and similar ones pending. This kind of a process would never stand if this was a land based application. It is simply sweeping issues under the rug by utilizing the ocean. And I apologize, I've gone slightly over. And I will submit written comments accordingly. I thank the D P. I thank the host for allowing me to speak.
John, thank you so much. Appreciate the
Thank you, sir.
I want to turn, I'm going to, I'm going to start just taking hands in order. And if there are other elected officials, just make sure you get your hand up and and leave your hand up until you're done speaking. When you do speak, obviously unmute. And also, we'd love to see your picture if that's okay. And then when you're done, just make sure that you also lower your hand that we can do that for you. One thing, if you're on the phone, I believe that star nine cam is that right that raises your hand?
Star six, unmute and star nine will raise your hand.
Okay, star six muted unmute on your phone, star nine raise your hand. If you're on the zoom app on your phone, there's a way to do that in the app, which is sometimes a little confusing. So Maria, you're up next, and then Paul Eidman after Maria. So Maria, over to you. Please introduce yourself.
Just unmuting myself and getting my video going. Sorry about that.
No, thank you.
Hi, I'm Maria Ritter. I live in Point Pleasant. I'm also one of the board members of Save Barnegat Bay. My concern is mostly centered on the bay. I have two issues that I have not seen addressed yet. One is, as we know, we have new stormwater regulations. I went down to Lacey Township to look at the applications. Right now, as we know, Barnegat Bay is a category one, which means that no storm waters are allowed to drain into it. And right now in the facility that they plan on using, they're not updating the drainage system and they are planning to put it right back into Barnegat Bay, which they have not provided a solution for. And I don't think is a good concern because Barnegat Bay needs to be protected. The other question is the eel grass. There was a new published article just came out concerning about how sea grass actually converts forty percent more CO2 than trees. And right now, they are planning on putting the cables down through some of the luscious parts of the eel grass. There's no reason for this. There are other ways for them to come in. They do not need to cross over Long Beach State Park. There's just no reason for it. It goes way out of their way. They can come through the channel, although it might be technically more difficult in the long run. The eel grass does not come back. And I think that is a grave concern for our area. And there's really no reason to touch what is the second or third longest natural doom structure left in the United States. And there's no reason to touch it when there's other places they can come across a bridge. There's many other ways to come in to Oyster Creek. Those are really my two comments that I would really like to know more about. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your comments. Appreciate it. Let me go to Captain Paul Eidman and then Swarna after that. So Paul.
Yes, hi there. And thanks for having me and giving us the ability to comment about this. Hope you can hear me. Okay.
Sound good.
My name is Captain Paul Eidman. I'm a small business owner and operator in New Jersey. I run a small charter boat, fishing charter boat and whale watching tour boat along our coast. I see no reason why the permit should not be granted to Ersted. And I support the burial of the transmission cable through and running it through the Green Acres property and over to the old power plant. As a waterman, if I felt that this project posed a threat or a danger to my friends, the whales, the dolphins, the or the turtles, I would not support this or other projects like this. Additionally, I feel that offshore wind is a clear path to ending the burning of fossil fuels for electricity. I feel that ocean warming, ocean acidification and polluted air need to be reduced as soon as possible. So all of us can benefit. I feel that the dangers and effects of climate change are far greater than any perceived value, excuse me, perceived harm from the installation or operation of the wind farms. And that that's about it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. All right, and for any mispronunciation of names, please do forgive me. Swarna, over to you.
Thank you. Do you hear me?
Yes, you sound good.
My name is Swarna Muthukrishnan, and I'm the Water Quality Research Director for Clean Ocean Action. I'm here to offer my testimony today for the state permit applications. We all know that getting the science right with offshore wind energy development is extremely critical because the overarching goal is toward a cleaner, greener future to mitigate the impacts of climate change. But what we've seen is that boom and the state governments have actually overlooked critical scientific data gaps in pushing an accelerated agenda to industrialize millions of acres of the marine environment. And for such an endeavor, the repetitive assertions that impacts, if any, will be minimal or negligible is too good to be true or accurate. All of this development will impact nearshore and onshore, including areas where scientists recommend retreat due to climate change. The D P's research and monitoring initiative on offshore wind is critical to good science and governance. However, we know that the studies are behind schedule. Access to data is limited. Collaboration with entities is unknown, and yet offshore wind is really being sidetracked. Orsted's state permit applications were deemed complete by D P, yet it lacks important details and skirts responsibilities for the impacts nearshore, onshore and offshore. The twenty twenty one comprehensive conservation management plan for Barnegat Bay acknowledges that the sustainability of ecosystem services and the base biotic resources, economy, bill communities, and the people are increasingly at risk and catalyzed by climate change and sea level rise impacts. And it calls for conscious efforts to actually promote and support resilient and sustainable land use practices, including soil restoration, shoreline restoration, rich material management and low impact development. And this can happen only when county, local, regional, state land use managers and other entities work collaboratively. However, the permit applications do not respond adequately to these pressing issues of concern and do not refer to integrations. And some examples of a clear lack of integration are, you know, not aligning with the State of the Bay report that came up in twenty twenty one for the bay. And let's see C M P that was released early this year. And the most important one is the Coastal Storms Management Draft Integrated Feasibility Report and Tier One D I S that was released in August twenty twenty one. Technical working groups, N G D P, and a lot of peers, interest groups and nonpartisan groups like Clean Ocean Action have routinely highlighted the lack of sufficient data, uncertainties and impacts to population levels, and they need to thoroughly understand cumulative impacts, just to name a few. Without the ocean, there is no us. No one denies that offshore wind may have value to reducing greenhouse gas emissions, but let's do it right. That starts with a collective and transparent objective to get the science right before critical decisions are made that would forever impact the ocean. And that begins with a responsible effort to begin at a smaller scale, what we have been consistently referring to as a pilot project. We will be submitting comments in written version also, and thank you so much for the opportunity.
Great. Thank you so much for your comments. I want to thank all the speakers for keeping to the time limit. Really appreciate it so everyone can speak. For folks who join late, we're we're in public comment period. People are given up to three minutes. There's a timer that Cam has in his window for people to watch, and I'm just taking people in sequence. If you just joined and do want to make a comment, under reactions, there's a raised hand function, raise your hand and I will call in order. So let me go next to Bob Stern and then to Michael Dean. So Bob, over to you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you sound good.
Oh, good. All right. Thanks for the opportunity to talk to you this evening. I represent a group called Save Long Beach Island Incorporated. We currently have about four thousand five hundred supporters. And that's not just people on Long Beach Island, but in the general area on land and further south as well. And we are, we are not opposed to offshore wind energy in general. We think it has a place in the energy mix. But we are concerned as previous speakers with the site selection process and how each project could be weighed. I won't go into the the adverse impacts of the particular project. But I would like to just make a comment or ask some questions about the benefits of these projects. Because I think in the end, each project should come down to some weighing of cost and benefit. And in the introductory remarks, statements made by the commissioner, it speaks to a number of broad benefits like reducing climate change, reducing sea level rise and so on. But we we get kind of confused here because with regard to climate change, the federal agency itself, the B O E M states in impact statements. And I quote from their Vineyard Wind Impact Statement that there will be no collective impact on climate change from these projects. Similarly, with respect to sea level rise, it appears based on international climate change reports that there will be no reduction in sea level rise. But just some small delay. For our project off L B I, we estimated that the only sea level rise benefit would be a delay of nine days in whatever sea level rise is coming, which hardly seems worth a five billion dollar investment. And then it goes on, it speaks to protection of aquatic resources. But again, as a previous caller mentioned, these projects are right in the migration path of a critically endangered whale. We can't see how that protects aquatic resources. And finally, with respect to greenhouse gas reductions, it's probably true that there will be some greenhouse gas reduction in New Jersey. But we share power in a larger grid. And the fact that we can no longer share that power all the time because we're using intermittent sources may actually cause places like Western Pennsylvania to have to crank up coal sources. So on a regional basis, it's not clear whether we're going to reduce or increase greenhouse gases. So the the bottom line of all this is, I would ask the D P in making these broad statements to try to pin them down to some technical resource, some documents, some analysis. Because we're trying hard to do that when we criticize. And I think the same standard should be applied to proponents who offer benefits. So so I'll leave it at that based on the timeframe. And I would appreciate seeing that kind of technical support in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob, for your comments. Appreciate it. Okay, I think we've got Michael Dean and then Suzanne Horneck. Michael, over to you.
Thanks, Patrick. And thanks for all the D P commissioners and staff for the opportunity to to speak tonight. I spoke the other day. I had a number of questions, but first off, you know, I am in in opposition of of the project at large, and I believe all the permit applications submitted related to this issue should be halted and rejected at this point. They were listed at the beginning. By my count, that's only as the mayor pointed out, you know, we're doing things piecemeal here and not looking at things cumulatively in terms of the overall projects that are being proposed, but also in terms of the permits required here for the New Jersey D P. By my count, there's thirteen or fourteen that are required. We're addressing five with this public call. I had a question on the last call that I still haven't gotten an answer to whether there will be public hearings for the other permits just for this one project. You know, there are there at least a dozen other ones coming down the road. I think there's three active. And, you know, one of the main ones, I know there's a lot of people on here from Ocean City and from Cape May County is the Green Acres diversion permit that the company itself held a hearing for without the New Jersey held the New Jersey D P application hearing for without the D P president solicited comments for that hearing and for that application. The application is actually in different places on the D P's website is kind of hard to find. So I mean, a long way of saying this, this process is just, it's it's it seems out of order without all of the applications being in and also out of order with respect to any of the federal studies being completed today. any of the federal studies being completed today. So I don't know how an agency of the state that's charged with protecting the environment for the citizens and, well, actually, all the inhabitants of the state, the humans and every other species, as, as you know, Mayor Peterson pointed out. And Bob just did as well, that are, many of which are threatened. How you can proceed with individual, with a handful of individual permits for a project that's going to have that massive an implication? When you don't, we don't even know where the rest of the projects are. So they're the crux of my comments. I echo everything the prior speakers have said with respect to the individual ones, particularly what Bob just pointed out. I would like to highlight that as well. It seems like every time you go through comments from from the supporters of the, of the project or even the applicants, when you go through the actual applications, it presents these broad sweeping, it will benefit the environment in general. It will help climate change, and there's no hard data to back it up. And in fact, as, as, as Bob pointed out, the BOM studies actually actually claim otherwise. So, I mean, but in that sense, the applications are false and misleading to begin with. So I, I would like to, as Bob suggested, to hold them to the same standard or to some higher standard. I know I'm running out of time here, but I would ask, you know, I don't appreciate the the opportunity to speak. One of the Department of Environmental Protection's guiding principles, there's only five listed on the website, is to be open and transparent with the public. So it, I mean, it would be helpful at some point if, if somebody could lay out maybe in a hearing or at the end of this might be helpful. What is the status of the other, of the other permits and, and and how is that process, how is the whole process going to play out?
Michael, thank you. It's been a little bit over three minutes, but I think the point absolutely noted about the other permits.
Okay, we would like to have, but again, thank you for for the opportunity to speak.
No, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I think Suzanne Horneck is next, and then Edward V is after that. So Suzanne, over to you, and thanks, Michael.
Hi, I'm Suzanne, and I am one of the founders of and representing Protect Our Coast NJ, which has approximately 20, 2,500 people and growing. We vehemently oppose this and all offshore wind for all the reasons that have already been mentioned. Um, I do have a couple of questions. I don't understand why the public will not get answers from the DEP to our questions. That seems wrong. Um, also, why is the next meeting being held so far away from Ocean City and the other coastal towns? You know, when this is ground zero. My third question is to Captain Ideman, and I just wonder if he's on Orsted's payroll. I assume that he is because his information is incorrect. Now, the reasons that I am and my group is opposed to this and all offshore wind is so numerous, I can't mention it all in three minutes, but basically, there, this whole process is just so unprofessional. These things are experimental, inefficient, extravagantly expensive. The environmental impact studies are not complete. The paperwork that we do have from Orsted is erroneous at best and contains outright lies, if you ask my opinion. Which, if you give me more than three minutes, I'll be happy to cite specifics on that. But Ocean City's attorney has already done so. This is not a utility. It is not appropriate for the BPU to be in charge of determining whether or not the state, after taking away our rights and all constituents' rights to home rule, should be allowed to hold secret hearings and grant permission to take our land that's already been designated as green acres away from us to lay radiation emitting cables across our beach, our island, and our wetlands. That is not okay with anybody in, that I can think of who's not standing to make a profit from this. Furthermore, just to be clear, we object to the BPU president making these decisions when he is accepting gifts from Orsted, which has been publicly documented. Now, according to the COPS for Ocean Wind One and Atlantic Shores, as well as the DEIS for Ocean Wind One, we know that both of these, all of these projects are going to increase our use of fossil fuels, increase our carbon emissions for the duration of the construction, which could last 10 to 15, possibly 20 years, at which time the original ones that were built will fail. They will have to be done again, so it will be an ongoing thing of just constant upheaval of our coastline, of our ocean, of our communities. This is such a ridiculous concept, and I have to ask, why? Is it because certain politicians are invested in Orsted and other companies? Why on earth would anybody want to do this and eradicate several endangered species that are crucial to our food chain? I mean, this makes no sense. And on top of that, you know, they keep telling us things like, oh, this will make for great reef fishing, except we don't have reef fish, and Orsted intends to, okay, Orsted intends to prevent the public from fishing in that area anyway for safety reasons. The whole thing is a nightmare, and I beg you to not approve this or any other plan.
Oh, thank you, Suzanne. I do want to make note of one important ground rule. I would ask that people not comment on other commenters. Captain Ideman did let me know that he is in no way employed or works for Orsted or any other developer, and I would ask people to refrain from commenting on others and their affiliation. Please speak for yourself. Concerns that you had, no problem, but please don't speak about other commenters and their affiliations.
I apologize.
Suzanne, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Suzanne, thanks for your comments. I'm going to turn it over to Ed V next.
Well, that's interesting.
Ed, over to, and over to you. And if you could just introduce yourself and affiliation.
I see you meant Ed Vinkowski when you said Ed V. It just.
You got it. Sorry about that. I didn't want to risk saying your name wrong.
Understood. It happens all the time. Okay, but so my name is Ed Vinkowski. I'm a resident of Plumstead Township. But I've spent much of my life in and around Barnegat Bay. And in full transparency, I'm currently serving as the board chair for Save Barnegat Bay, though my comments this evening are my personal comments. My, my first comment is that I have to tell you that I'm really disappointed with the timing of, of these public hearings and the comment period. I just think it's shameful to be cramming three public hearings within, between Thanksgiving and Christmas, and then having written, written comments due between Christmas and New Year's Eve or New Year's Day with so much else, so much going on in that time period for the general public. I just think it was a shameful tactic, I think, to reduce, actually reduce participation by the public, which it should have been done at a different time. Beyond that, I mean, I think I can speak for Save Barnegat Bay in saying that we're, we're generally favorable to any form of renewable energies. But what's going on out in the ocean, our mission is and focus is to protect Barnegat Bay. So we're going to limit our comments to the planned disruption of Barnegat Bay. And I should say that we'll be submitting written comments, so I'm not going to dwell this evening on, on what those comments will be. Be assured that we, Save Barnegat Bay, will be submitting written comments in response to this permit application. I briefly, that, that two major areas, areas of concern are the disruption to these precious eel grasses, which I think has been stated, but earlier, you know, means are one of the most effective means of reducing greenhouse gases. So to disrupt those, and they, and they don't grow back at all with any ease. We're very concerned with the potential disruption to the eel grasses. That's primarily on, you know, on the inshore side of Island Beach State Park, where it's currently planned to run these lines. Beyond that, we're also very concerned at the other end that we're, you know, running these lines to the Oyster Creek site. That's a site that's taken us 50 years to close down and a site that did irreparable and incalculable harm to Barnegat Bay and the wildlife and, and, and every living organism in Barnegat Bay. We finally got the thing closed down, and now there's a plan to disrupt that site in a manner that gives us grave concern about what, again, continuing harm to Barnegat Bay, be it, whether it be stormwater, whether it be dredging, and, and all else that's planned on that site. That's pretty much the gist of it. I apologize if I went over. And I do thank you for the opportunity to comment. I just wish it didn't have to be a couple of weeks before Christmas. Thank you.
Edward, thank you. Really appreciate it. Other people who would like to make a comment, if you want to raise your hand? Again, if you're on the phone, you can hit star nine, and that will let us know that you would like to make a comment. So I want to give people, other folks who have not spoken, a chance to comment. I will then give that a minute and do a quick summary of the comments that I heard in very short version, and then we'll give people a final chance if they want to comment. So just give a pause here for a minute. I would just note the range of comments, and again, the transcriber and the Zoom recording will capture the detail that you provided. This will just be very short, but I think a range of issues that we heard, concerns about intermittent resources, concerns about cumulative impact, concerns about impacts on marine mammals, stormwater, eel grass, dune structure, a fair amount of conversation about do or don't they really reduce carbon emissions and address climate change? Comments around kind of science and evidence and thoroughness, concerns about kind of the speed of the development of this and other projects as well. Questions or comments about integration of both various entities or jurisdictions, as well as issues, concerns about the site selection process. The, also, I think a number of more process concerns that people raised around this process in terms of meeting time, length, et cetera. And then lastly, about the Oyster, Oyster site in particular, Oyster Creek site in particular, SLS comment are made. So I will now turn it to another commenter, Francis, over to you, and just state your name and affiliation.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. We hear you.
My name is, my name is Francis Dietzick. No affiliation. I'm a homeowner in Ocean City. And I also object to the wind project in general. Some of the things were already stated, the fact that it's not going to really reduce carbon emissions. I'm looking at it more from a grid reliability perspective. If you look at what's going on in Europe right now, especially in Germany, and also what happened in Texas, wind projects typically make the grid less reliable because the wind doesn't blow all the time and the generators will go down. There's also additional issues for the backup. So if, if the wind turbines are not producing electricity, how is the electricity produced? Because we need it when the wind's not blowing. So typically, that means you have to have two sources of generation. You have the wind, and then you also have the backup generation. Another thing that was not addressed is the cost to the ratepayers. Typically, whenever you have wind projects, the rate goes up, not down. There was a 60 Minutes episode about a project Orsted did over in Europe, and the rates to the consumers actually doubled. Besides that, we're, we're giving our sovereignty, our sovereign, to European countries, or not country, but European corporation. They're the ones that are going to be probably profiting from all of this. So concern is, is that the dollars to be saved, if any, or revenue was going to go mostly to a European company. And lastly, I just want to know who benefits from this, because I don't see any benefit to ratepayers, to homeowners. The only benefit I see is going to be to, again, to a European country. So I think that's all I have. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Francis, for your comments. Other folks who want to comment? Why we're posting, just a quick question for DEP. Typically, when do you post the, the public comments and response to comments? If you could just kind of explain that process a little bit. We just got a question and chat about just the process side. So I don't know whether Jennifer or Janet, you want to just respond to how that, how the process works?
Yeah, so we'll, we will issue a response to comment document when we issue a permit decision on this. I can let Janet go into any more detail than that. You know, as far as, as any, any other process or timeline, but we will be responding to all the comments that we receive in writing and what we hear, hear, hear tonight in a response to comments document.
Janet, anything to add to that?
No, that's absolutely correct. That's, that's how we will handle the response to comments.
Right, thank you. And Suzanne, hold on just one second. I want to see if other folks want to make a comment, or haven't. And then I, we do have time to go back, come back to you. So let me just make sure. Is there anybody else who hasn't spoken who would like to make a comment, and then I will go back to Suzanne. Doug O'Malley, over to you. And Suzanne, keep your hand up, because I'll definitely come back to you. Doug?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, sound good.
Super excellent. Sorry, I was having some problem connecting earlier. My name is Doug O'Malley, D O U G O'Malley, O apostrophe capital M A L L E Y. I serve as the Director of Environment in Jersey. We represent more than 80,000 citizen members and activists across the state. I wanted to clearly state that, one, to thank the DEP, not only for this hearing, but for their, their ongoing work on these processes, these permits and offshore wind. You know, honestly, the clearest threat to the Jersey Shore is the threat of climate change and is the threat of growing sea level rise. You know, and, you know, clearly, we need to develop offshore wind in the most responsible way possible and to use the mantra of DEP to avoid, minimize, mitigate environmental impacts. But we also need to be clear-eyed that the research in front of us shows that sea level rise is baked in, but it's not, it, it entirely depends upon the choices we make over the course of this decade. And climate scientists say that if we're able to reduce climate pollutants by 50% over the course of this decade, that we have an opportunity to stop the worst impacts of climate change. And that's really what is, is kind of at hand with the, the question of offshore wind, right? And, and really, what we're, what we're hearing is whether we want to stick with the status quo or develop clean renewable energy that can get us off dirty fossil fuels. We've seen a legacy of more than 5,000 offshore wind turbines in Europe show that the technology is incredibly viable. We have the Inflation Reduction Act, which was passed earlier this year by Congress that shows that we can reduce admissions and actually reduce costs in, in PJM energy grid if we're able to invest in clean energy. And I specifically wanted to cite a study that just came out just, you know, just this week from the Princeton University Zero Lab showing the carbon emissions and electricity costs in PJM will both climb sharply through 2030 if we are making these investments in clean energy and if we're able to get them onto the grid. And really, in some ways, this is a zero-sum choice. Because just, you know, just earlier, super, earlier last, last week, there was a courtesy proposal provided of DEP's NJ Pact rules on stationary sources. We in the environment community strongly advocate the transition away from fossil fuels. And we are proud that the Murphy administration has committed to expanding offshore wind and making New Jersey a national leader. However, we can't be a national leader if we're not helping offshore wind, and if we're doing it at scale. And the Ocean Wind One project is at scale because it will power more than half a million homes. It will provide 1,100 megawatts of clean energy, which will replace, one, the BL England Power Plant, which now thankfully is retired, as well as Oyster Creek, which was obviously an ecological menace to Barnegat Bay. So when we look at the, not only the decision in front of us here, but also in the broader question of what are we doing about climate change and should we support offshore wind? You know, it, it, it can't, you know, we, we can't. We, we have to ensure that we're making this investment, or else we are going to see the worst impacts of climate change. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Doug. Thanks for comments. Anybody else who hasn't spoken yet would like to make a comment? Please raise your hand, and then if I don't see other hands, I will go back to Suzanne. Okay, Suzanne, back to you. If you could just reintroduce yourself to an affiliation would be great.
Hi, Suzanne Horneck, and I am one of the founders of Protect Our Coast NJ. I'm also a resident of Ocean City. And I agree, climate change is a real problem, and we really do need to address it. However, why anybody would think that this is considered clean energy, I have no idea. Because if you read the actual paperwork submitted for this plan, as well as the Atlantic Shores Plan, you will see that it does absolutely nothing but make things worse. We do have other cleaner technologies that we should be looking at. This is not it. What I wanted to talk about, though, was there have been recently several studies released that talk about how offshore wind destroys tourism and other Offshore wind destroys tourism and other local industries. Which basically is going to wipe Ocean City and other towns that don't have anything but tourism to recommend them right off the face of the earth. But even more important than that is these new studies that are out and I'd be glad to provide them for anybody that wants them. That talk about how the EMFs, the the cables. Stretching across the ocean and across the bay. Cause mutation and death in certain shellfish and other animals, particularly. Those that are used for commerce, particularly lobster, shrimp, scallops, that kind of thing. They get near the EMFs and they die. They they mutate and they die because it's radiation. We personally don't want this in our water, on our beaches, on our land or in our bay. It's dangerous and we need to do something that's. Less severe. I called the EPA and I said, when you put these cables on our land. They're going to emit radiation and EPA's response to me, the New Jersey EPA's was yes, we know. And once it's laid down, we'll come out and measure and we'll let you know if it's within allowable limits. Well, I'm sorry, but there are no allowable limits of radiation near my children. That's something the DEP really needs to consider. This is dangerous. It's not cost effective. And it's, you know, it's so bad for the environment. It makes no sense. Let's look at something that really is green, clean. And safe. Thank you.
Thanks, Suzanne. Is there anyone else tonight who would like to comment during this public hearing? Want to give people another opportunity. If there's anybody who hasn't spoken yet, want to make sure you have your chance. So I'm just looking at the looking at the screen for hand raises here. We'll give it a minute. Michael Dean and then Roseanne. Michael.
Oh, geez, for that I was still on mute. Yeah, I just want to I I was I was the one who sent a question in regarding. Public comments. So I don't know if I got a straight answer about that, but. Will public will the public comments submitted be available to the public? That was my question. And and when will they be? You know, as frustrating as the process has been on through many different agencies. You know, for the BPU, you can go right on and you can see all the comments like there's been a number of very good ones here. Their public comments, why weren't they made? Why would you need to go through an Oprah request to see them? I don't understand that. And then since we do have some extra time here. If either, you know, Janet or Jennifer could address. Maybe the question I had earlier about. The process in general from the DEP's perspective, this isn't really a question about. The issues, but just the process and how all these other permits. Will be either brought forward in a public hearing or decided on. Outside of the public view and why is that? So that's all. Thank you.
Michael, any process questions? I will I'll hold till the end and then I'll come back to those. And if DP is able, they will answer. If not, they won't. But I'll hold on to that. But at the end, I'll come back to them. So.
Yeah.
Roseanne.
Can anyone hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Wonderful. I have just walked in the door. And so as someone earlier had said, this is not really such a great time. With people having their heads in other ideas, but. Because this is so important to me. And not just myself, but extended people in my community, which is now Ocean City. I may get a priority. I do remember the first time I had seen wind turbines out west and how I was kind of amazed. That they were out there and they they were hopefully pulling in some energy and they look like phenomenal engineering phenomena. But I saw what it also did to the landscape there and I'm not so concerned. About the shore landscape as I am about all the other reasons that this makes no sense to me. The numbers don't make sense. The cost for this. For what we would actually get is astronomical. So the numbers of the economics do not make sense. I appeal to the history of the turbines. And they don't have a long history in the ocean, but the places that we are now seeing are having more difficulty. With efficiency rates, efficiency is only about forty to forty five percent. Problems again with the economics and the. Definitely with the environmental aspect. Someone early had talked about the EMS. I was also brought up that the temperature in each of the lines will increase the temperatures in the ocean and continuing on that. Affecting the temperature in the air. Isn't that why we are starting to look at green options? To. Plateau our. Energy and climate situation. This, the wind time turbines will not affect that. I'm going to go to plea on an emotional side. I'd like to quote Teddy Roosevelt. His thinking on saving our national parks. Would we apply the same to our national seashores here? He did what he could to keep those. Beautiful places scenic areas intact for future generations. And I would never want to be the one that was be responsible for putting the number of turbines that are planned out there. Which in effect could destroy. See your sea life, your life below the sea and life above the sea will definitely be affected. I also have some information here on the potent greenhouse gases that have been. Emitted in platforms in Scotland's Angus coastline in the north.
Then three minutes. So if you could wrap up if you could.
Okay. Combinations of. The greenhouse. Or type of gas SF six, which has been banned in Europe. And probably should be banned anywhere, anywhere, and they're using it and it's leaking. There also have been studies on the wake turbulences.
We've given folks three minutes each, so you're beyond time. So thank you so much. Really appreciate the comments. And again. You people also take written comments by as of December. Thank you. I want I think I saw another hand up, Edward. I think you had your hand up again.
Yes, thank you. I was reminded of something hearing some of those comments. Another comment that I wanted to make earlier was in a concern that we have. For those of us. Concerned say Barnegat Bay and anybody who. Who treasures the bay as much as I do was related to the depth that the cables will be laid. As they cross the bay. We were told that they were that it seemed pretty fairly shallow to us below the bay floor. And we were told the reason for that was that they needed to be that shallow to be able to disperse the heat from those cables. And that just is a is a red flag for us that. You know, that just means if you if if you need to disperse that kind of heat, that means you're going to be dispersing heat to Barnegat Bay, which. Is is a. You know, a lot of similarities to what happened at Oyster Creek that destroyed so much aquatic life. So it's just a, we would like to better understand. The adverse impact that that the depth that those cables will be laid. Will have. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Edward. Anybody else tonight who would like to make a final comment before we wrap up and I'll come back to the process questions raised in just a second. So. Any other final comments tonight? So if I could turn to DP, I guess I have two questions. One, in terms of, I think I just want to, I think what I heard Jennifer you say is. The public comment and response to those comments or response to a summary would be posted along with the final decision on the permits by DP. Is that correct?
Yes. So what the division will do is collect all of the comments that are submitted in writing. We'll have these recordings and transcripts. We will look very closely at those. Take a look at all the application materials and then we will prepare a document in response to those comments that will briefly summarize the comment. And then provide our written response at the time of permit decision. Those comments are not available, like the full versions of comments are not available on our website, but. Of course, you can submit the Oprah request and we can easily compile those and send the full, the full volume to you if that's what you would like.
Great. Thank you. And there was one other question, which is it all it came up the last two sessions, which is. I think there, you know, DP may be issuing a number of permit or permit reviews of this, these particular project or projects. And so for permits that aren't covered under the hearings, you know, this session. Are there other hearings or processes so the public has a chance to weigh in on other permits?
I don't want to speak to other programs, processes here primarily because I might just get it wrong. I want to make sure I'm giving the correct information. Typically, there is a public process associated with any approvals that we're issuing. So if there are other approvals required, you should be able to check. I don't know, Janet, Lindsay, if if that information would be on our offshore wind webpage. DP is an offshore wind webpage that has a lot of information on it there. So that you could track what those other approvals are and keep your eyes out for notifications there as well for any other public hearings or public comment periods.
Great, Jennifer. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, so. Want to give one more, one last chance for any additional comments? And then we'll just, again, I think what I'll do, Cam, can you put up the last slide, which just has the information about the the written verbal comment and the website location and all those things, just so people can see that? Okay, great. So I just want to make sure as we close tonight. But again, any written comments would be due fifteen days after the December fifteenth public hearing, which you all know is in person. And that's, I believe, this Thursday. But within by December thirtieth, you can submit any detailed written comments here. If you made comments verbally tonight, they are part of the record. So you don't have to submit the same comment unless you want to. But certainly, if you want to elaborate or provide more detail, those comments are welcome and the means described just here as well. Great. All right. Well, I think with that, Jennifer, why don't I turn it to you to bring this hearing to a close tonight?
So you know what, Patrick, is there a way for us to take like a five minute break? By any chance, just in case there are folks who are kind of waiting to log on.
We can certainly do just in case people are going to come in late because it is a workday and people may be coming after work. So why don't we just do this? Why don't we? It's six, I have six oh five on my clock right now. So why don't we do this? Why don't we just take a ten minute break just in case? We'll we'll stay on. Everybody else can stay on or leave whatever you go to do. And then at six fifteen, I'll kind of come back on. I'll check in. So if anybody new has joined, we'll look for the the waiting room. And provide one last time for a comment before we close. Does Jennifer, does that work? Okay?
I think that would be good. Thank you.
Right. So everybody, if you want to stay on until six fifteen to listen. Have at it. If you don't, and you made your comments, they're counted. Thank you for joining. And we'll return after a break at fifteen to check in. Thank you so much. Right. We also have a transcriber who's capturing that as well. I did notice someone had turned on the closed captioning, which is totally fine to be able to to see that in and sort of see it in real time. If you need to see as well as hear. That won't be the official transcript. Official transcript will be the the person doing the work because Zoom has not mastered verbal to written word. So sometimes it's completely cooked. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to David Pringle to comment. If you could state your name and affiliation. Thank you.
Thank you. Confirming you can hear me?
Yes, sound good.
Terrific. Thank you, David Pringle. I am representing Clean Water Action. Want to thank you for this hearing. I'll just my headset so you see my full face. Very informed. I missed this, the briefing before, very familiar with the project. And we are very much in favor of. Orsted moving forward with this project with as an environmental group with all deliberate speed. Obviously, the today's hearing is specific on a variety of land use permits around where they're going to be bringing the power onto land. I think it's critical to note that the main areas they're bringing the power onto land are existing massive infrastructure for energy purposes. Two extremely controversial projects that Clean Water Action takes strong pride in them being shut down because they were dirty. Power plants and it's entirely appropriate for them to be repurposed for clean energy. It's. Incredibly poetic and we're very excited about it. If we all know there's a climate catastrophe happening, we're living in the middle of it. Irene, Sandy, Ida, all of our favorite names carry horrible connotations in terms of death and destruction. Folks losing lives, losing money, land. Massive trauma. You know, if we don't get our act together, it's gonna be a moot point in fifty years because Long Beach Island is going to be underwater. North Airport is going to be underwater and when it's not underwater, we're going to be having daily flooding. And the same actions that we need to take for climate change drastically reducing environmental justice because the vast majority of dirty power. That these wind turbines will be replacing are in overburn communities that are literally killing people every day. That all said, you know, we are not advocating that DEP or Orsted, you know, go forward willy nilly. Rules need to be followed, conditions need to be applied. So whether it be right whales or flood hazard. You know, we are advocates for stronger flood hazard rules and have even been proposed. But we must move forward. We have no time to waste. Just fifteen years ago, we thought we had forty three years left, eighty percent by twenty fifty. But now the science is saying we have eight years yet. Left fifty percent by twenty thirty. So we have to move forward much faster than we have in to date. We cannot go slow. We Governor Cody had a task force in two thousand and five to study. Anybody remember that that task force report? I think it's shat on the shelf and still is sitting sitting there eighteen years later, hasn't really been used. Governor Christie signed a great bill in two thousand and ten, then he sat on it for seven, eight years, never implemented it. So. You know, we have been waiting and going slow for too long. We have to move fast. You drive down the parkway, you can see the windmills ten miles away. I have family living. I'm just wrapping up. I have family that has a beach house in Wicca, Pog, Rhode Island. The turbines at Block Island are the same distance as these would be. You can't see them there. When you do see them, they look beautiful on the horizon. Folks that are concerned about the view need to be much more concerned about climate change. Move forward with all deliberate speed. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And we're sorry, we got our timer. We we lost it for a minute, but it's back. So sorry to have to interrupt you. So thank you, David, for your comments. Appreciate. Are there other folks who joined the call at our six fifteen or so break? Who would like to make a comment? Just please raise your hand. The raise hand function is in the reactions part of the comment bar at the bottom of Zoom there. So other folks who joined us. Around like shortly after six, who would like to make a comment who have not made a comment already? Anyone else? Okay, so Jennifer, I want to kind of turn to you about, you know, how you would like to proceed. I think we had, we did have probably three or four folks join the waitlist. We've offered a chance for comment. Appreciate David's comments. Jennifer, do you want to stay on for a bit? Would you like to close the hearing? Really up to you.
I think we should just give it another five minutes. And if there's nobody else who joins, nobody else who wants to comment, then we can close.
Okay, great. So again, we'll, all of you are welcome to stay or go as you see fit. What we'll do is again, it's I have about six twenty one now. So what I'll do is again, I'll just kind of look for hand raises as well as anybody joining late. And circle back in about five minutes. Okay, thank you, Jennifer. And Roseanne, when we start up in about. And Roseanne, when we start up in about five minutes, I'll turn to you first. Um, so just keep your hand up and then I'll come back to you. Okay, uh, Roseanne, thanks for waiting. So uh, let's reopen if we could. Cam, make sure the recording is on. Um, I think we've got the the timer up and working now. Uh, so Roseanne, you know the drill. So back over to you.
Okay, I'm glad to have the opportunity to speak again. Um, I know we were just uh listening to someone talking about climate change. My background is in science education, specifically um science curriculum in PA and New Jersey. So I'm aware of what is being taught and pushed through the curriculums and also into many of the um adults in the arena. Um, but we need, these are climate alarmists. So people who are under that assumption that the world is going to end in ten years, of course, they are really concerned, but whether or not that is truth or not is where we have to, uh, what has to be addressed. And um, I for one do not believe this. Um, I also wanted to see if there was someone who could address these facts, which of course do affect um our environment is that um through the um access to the turbines, it said that they are going to be um fifteen eighty-five gallons of transfer former oil use, hundred and forty-six gallons general oil, diesel fuel, continuing on the greenhouse gases. Could someone address the truth to how much fossil fuel is used within the um access to the turbines? This would include also installation, vessel trips out to take care of installation. I'd also like someone to address the takes or kills of a hundred and two whales, six thousand sixteen dolphins, many birds and wildlife. Could someone address those issues while we are all on this meeting tonight?
Right. Um, Roseanne, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Um, and you get in our list of issues that I raised earlier in the meeting. I think Roseanne has added some additional ones as well. That is noted, DP is not commenting tonight, but we'll repair responsiveness uh summary for the comments made tonight and other hearings and in writing. Um, uh, when they close the process for reviewing and ma- making a decision on the permits. Um, anybody else tonight who would like to make a comment? Um, and again, we provide people, you know, two chances to comment if we have time, which we do. Um, and encourage commenters not to get into a back and forth about disagreement, but simply to state your viewpoints, issues and your data evidence. Um, David, over to you.
Thank you. Um, I would like to mention that. Um, that's.
Your, your, your audio is like uh reverberating a little bit or something. So maybe you want to try.
Is that better?
Uh, no, we can go ahead and say it. It's a little bit hard to hear, but I think we can understand. So go ahead.
Nope. Um, just a very, very quick point.
And David, I think to summarize.
Science, I, I uh, well, scientific assesses. That my most would do is my admission is good. There's that by point or thirty. That's not David Pringle speaking. That's all we're now, my mind, my scientists. Nobody would suggest the moral going ahead.
David, David, David. David, I'm sorry, I can't. Yeah, I I did hear you about it would produce, I think, clean jobs. I heard you say there was another point about sort of climate change and and risk writ large. I don't think we fully caught that. Um, so apologize that the audio is not quite right. So we caught what we could, but if you want to provide more clarity, certainly encourage you to put it in writing if you could by by December thirtieth. Sorry about the sound quality tonight. Okay, anybody else who hasn't spoken? Elizabeth Erickson, over to you.
Thank you. Um, I just have one question that I would appreciate having the response to. I've sat in on a number of um these sessions and a lot of people have made um in my opinion, some very important points and comments. And my question is, um, how are these being incorporated into the decision process? Um, do we truly have a voice um that is heard and that is um, um, something that can be impacting um the decisions? Or is this simply just a forum for us to express things? Um, and the decision makers moving forward with um the decisions that they intend to make? Um, thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Um, and there's been some additional comments on kind of concerns about the process overall as as you have just raised as well. Any other, anyone else who has not commented who wishes to make a final comment before we close tonight? Okay, so Jennifer, I think at this point, that's about six thirty-one. I will turn it back to you.
Okay. Um, and I guess just to to briefly, um, because it is process related, I do just want to reiterate that, yes, we do consider all of these comments um and incorporate them into our decision making. Um, all public comments are carefully reviewed. Um, and we do utilize it to help us uh in our determination. So I guess, yeah, with that, uh, doesn't seem like there's anybody else who wants to comment at this time. So um, we appreciate everybody taking the time to be here tonight and provide comments. Uh, the information that was presented tonight will be reviewed and considered by the department prior to us rendering a decision on this permit application. The opportunity to provide written comments again will remain open until December thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. That's fifteen days from the date of our last scheduled public hearing, which is on December fifteenth. Should you think of anything additional um comments or concerns after the close of this hearing, you may submit your comments electronically through the department's offshore wind webpage or in writing uh by Friday, December thirtieth, addressed to Janet Stewart, Bureau Chief of the NJDEP's Division of Land Resource Protection Bureau of Coastal Permitting. Um, again, thank you all for attending. This hearing is now closed.
Thank you all for attending. Really appreciate it or appreciate the thoughtful comments. Um, be safe. Good night. Thank you all.
Thank you.